Call me the Board of Select on meeting to order at 7:04 PM, June 1st. Like to do a roll call. Selectman, please.
Jennifer Wang, present.
Andrew Allard, present.
Erica Blake, present. We also have some guests on the line. Peter Caruso, Dr. Jason DeFalco, Robert Marks on Board of Health, Jane Reggio, Jackie Lima, Adrian Pettit, and of course, Tim LaBonte, as always. So first item, announcements. Do you have any announcements on your side, Peter?
No, I didn't. Other than what you passed around regarding Knights of Columbus. So you probably want to say that.
Yep, so we have, uh, the Knights of Columbus is sponsoring a food drive for the Blackstone Millville Food Pantry. That will be on June 20th from 9:00 AM to noon at St. Augustine's Church parking lot. It's basically going to be a drive-through and donate. You just stick your donation out the window. Somebody will come and grab it from you. This is a community event for Blackstone and Millville sponsored by the Knights of Columbus. So if you can go up there and donate to the food pantry, that would be fantastic. That's the only announcement I had. Anybody else for announcements?
No.
Meeting minutes, were those sent over? I did not see them.
So I sent them today. So it was this afternoon. So you might not have had time to see them. They came in late on Friday.
Okay.
So it was late morning. I guess I got to them.
Okay.
So they're Tuesday, May 4th through the 18th. And you might want to look at them later.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't reviewed them. So maybe we can do those at the next meeting. I don't know if you guys have reviewed them, but.
I have not. I didn't have time this afternoon.
Okay, so we'll just punt those to the next meeting then. Okay. All right. And correspondence, do we have any correspondence? I don't have any on my side. Okay. Departments, we have the Board of Health on here with us. Robert Marks, would you like to give us an update on what's going on? Board of Health advisements?
Sure, yeah, we, uh, we had a couple of pretty productive meetings over the last few weeks about planning for the town hall, for the library, and for the senior center. As far as local cases so far, we've, we've had 21 total cases. And two more recent ones on Friday and then again today, one, one each day in town here. But other than those two, every case given the, the guidelines for quarantine would be resolved if there weren't any complications. Obviously, we don't have access to any PHI, Protected Health Information. So, but, but it's been, it had been about two weeks since we had had our, our, our last case. So currently, we have two cases in town. The library hopes to open on the 8th for a curbside pickup only. And we don't see a problem with that as far as curbside pickup. But you know, we're, we're still listening to the, what the Governor's Office says on all this stuff every day. As far as the town hall, that took up the bulk of our meeting on Wednesday. Well, I guess two Wednesdays ago, Jackie Lima was involved in that meeting as well. She had a couple of good recommendations. And Sherry, who's there every day, our, our secretary, and she's, she also works with, with other town departments, had a few good suggestions. So far, we're at, at the town offices. If you're going to be coming in, you know, when they're open to the public, this is planning for, for that eventuality. We're thinking about one person in the little foyer where you, where you could walk in there at a time, trying to have like a queue of people waiting in their cars. We're thinking about maybe appointment only if you want to come in and do something because we still have the box out there where you can pay your, uh, you can pay your taxes via check, that, that kind of thing. We were talking about a possible door slider construction, like almost like, uh, like an access port where people could slide documents back and forth to the people working in there. That would cost money though, and we're not sure if the town has it or, or if the allocations that we have would be allowed to, to, we would be able to use them for something like that. And Sherry, actually, this is a fluid thing, and we, we've been discussing it as more information comes available and as people get more ideas. We're also like, we're, we're going to be talking about it on Wednesday. That there are a couple of windows that might work really well for, uh, for a walk-up service so that people wouldn't even have to enter the town hall and would still be able to do business. As far as the senior center goes, we, uh, I talked with Pam Dean Kovačić earlier today, actually, for, you know, I just happened to run into her. And I guess Tina Cook's going to be taking over for Jill Anderson. And they have a few ideas that they're going back and forth with. This was actually Jackie Lima suggesting that we should reach out to these people who, who are in these facilities every day and see what they have to say about, about the best ways to reopen because they're the people who are on the ground that know the most about their, their daily needs. On Wednesday, we're going to discuss it more, but as of right now, we're, we don't recommend that the senior center open. I don't, I don't think that we should have mass groups of our seniors together, especially with how this can affect the, the older population. Obviously, that changes every day. You know, right now, we're still in phase one of, of, uh, opening. Phase two should start within the next couple of weeks from what we've been hearing. So as these things change, our recommendations will obviously change with them. That's pretty much it for the town and all the, uh, all the things that, that I could think of. If anybody has any questions, I might be able to shed some light on it.
So, so I had added, you know, an item there under new business, the consideration of opening town hall. So I haven't really much information from the Board of Health in terms of what they've been thinking about. You know, what I've been thinking, so we'll probably work together on that is something similar to what you described. You know, so far, we've really limited the number of personnel in the building. And I think we can consider some level of opening on a limited basis with the same type of staffing. And that staffing really is, you know, in the mornings, we have a billing commissioner and the town clerk till 11:00 AM. And then, you know, from 11 on, we have our assistant tax collector treasurer. And occasionally, the treasurer is there at the same time. Occasionally, the town accountant's there, occasionally I'm there. But we're not pushing the envelope of the, what I would argue is a gray area in terms of 25% staffing level limitations. Because how you measure that is, as I say, gray. But some sort of limited consideration of some limited hours, some limited days perhaps, consistent with that type of staffing as our initial foray into opening uptown hall. And the access would be limited to no further than the main door at the vestibule. So they could possibly come into the, the main door there. And we would arguably consider some kind of a greeter, cleaner type person funded through the CARES Act funds available to sort of route people, connect people, and have some barrier between our people and the persons at the door and available masking PPE type equipment should the person not have it. So that stuff, I think we, we can talk about, and it sounds like it's on your radar, that sort of thing. I don't think there's any major construction needed. I think that, you know, the, the distance can be achieved and some passing of papers and stuff like that. The town clerk, you know, right now, some folks do meet by appointment. They don't really get too physically interactive. They maintain their distance. So the clerk has done some marriage, wedding types of things outdoors under that picnic area, for example, by appointment. The assistant treasurer has received and/or provided information to people in the parking lot. That, you know, I think we'll, we'll consider formalizing something. And I think the, you know, between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, we'll come up with something that'll keep everybody safe, both the public and our staff, while at the same time increasing the service that we can provide to folks in town.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's great. And what we, what we've been looking for really is, uh, is input like that. You know, because we only know so much about it, about the day-to-day operations of what the, what the town needs, what you guys provide, the services you provide, what you might be able to restrict versus what you might be able to open up a little bit more on. And any suggestions are, are great because we need them.
Terrific.
So Peter, at this point in time, would you say that there's somebody in the building every day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, from, uh, actually, the clerk and building inspector typically there, you know, eight-ish in the morning till they're 11 o'clock, they gotta get out.
Yep.
Then Marcia comes in.
Right.
And we try to keep Marcia pretty much there by herself occasionally. Like I say, Lisa comes in and, you know, Wednesdays or Tuesdays I pop in and but I'm generally back in my office. And when foraying out into the main part of the building, you know, we're all wearing masks and clean and so forth, not touching surfaces.
Right.
Pretty careful.
Okay.
Yeah, and I also think it's important when we do get to the finalizing stages that the staff is really, has an input. I don't want anyone coming to work like they're being forced to work in a situation that they don't feel comfortable with or, you know, and I'm sure, Peter, you're keeping those lines of communication open with them. So I just want to ensure that everyone feels comfortable and they feel safe.
I totally agree.
Whatever's decided.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from Board of Health that we need to know about today or?
I think we pretty much covered everything as far as the town goes. I haven't heard anything new about serological testing or its availability. I did hear something about CBS and Bellingham possibly becoming a drive-through test site. But other than that, anything that would directly affect Millville, I think that's just about it.
Okay.
And you, Bobby, you, you and Dustin were on the town moderator. We'll be, we have a later agenda item on that as well. But you provided great input in terms of holding outdoor town, annual town meeting on June 22nd. You, you, and I don't mean to paraphrase, and I know Jackie will talk about it, but while you're here, you all were supportive of moving forward with some sort of well-crafted plan.
Yes, definitely. And, you know, if there's a spike in local cases, we may want to rethink it. You know, when we spoke a couple of weeks ago, we hadn't really, we hadn't really had too many new cases. And we just recently had two new cases, but, uh, you know, we're not seeing a huge spike. So if that continues, then our recommendation stays the same, that we would definitely support a, a town meeting.
Bobby, sorry, can I just chime in? And that was outdoors, right?
Outdoors, yes. Outdoors, we, we think would probably be best at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for all your input, much appreciated.
Thank you.
See you at our next meeting.
See you next week.
All right, next item we have on the agenda, unless anybody has any questions or comments on that item. Next item, we have BMR School Committee Superintendent to speak with the RAC agreement. Also, we have Jane Reggio on the line as well.
So Erica, thanks for inviting us tonight. I asked, I spoke with Erica last week after your last meeting and asked for the opportunity to come and clarify a little bit about the regional agreement, our hope to have it on either the annual town meeting or if the annual town meeting gets pared down to have it in an early fall special town meeting and to move forward. And there were just a couple of questions that Peter had at the meeting. I believe Adrian answered most of them. Well, actually, I think almost all of them and Andrew as well quite well. But Jason and I wanted to come on and talk a little bit about that. And then we also had more information about the stipends for school committee members. And I know I sent that to the chairperson, but to talk a little bit about that when you discuss the BBT citizens petition. The regional agreement is, is a governance document that has not been updated. And I know there have been questions from the community saying, oh, it's come to the town before. Bits and pieces of it have, but that, not the agreement in total to make sure that it's up to date, to make sure that it's matching current practices. And one of the pieces that struck me was the one that Adrian pointed out was directly from CMR Massachusetts Regulation Codes. But it's what happens if the school committee wants to increase its budget? And I think one of the concerns was the two-thirds vote of the school committee. The reason that that's outlined like that is the agreement talks about any vote that the school committee takes is just a majority, except when it's very specific items like amending the plan of where students are educated or the budget. And that's when it goes to two-thirds. So that's why that starts with two-thirds vote, just to indicate that it's not one of the regular majority votes. And then it just literally is word for word what's in the CMR regulations. And then another piece that came up was if a town wants to withdraw from the region. And I wanted to be very clear to anybody who's listening to this, if a town wants to withdraw, that town has to vote on.
Jane, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Thank you. So if a, if a member town wants to withdraw, they have to start in their town, create an amendment that comes to the school committee. The school committee has to outline that or accept that amendment and how the town, and how the district will dissolve. So we're only two members, so it would mean the dissolution of the district. So there would have to be a plan, and that plan would have to be voted on by both towns. So you, if you were the town that was not withdrawing and you chose not to accept the plan because you might be left with more liability than you can handle, then your community wouldn't accept it and the other town wouldn't be able to withdraw. So the, the, the balance there is not that there'll be liability left to any one particular town over another particular town. The balance is that both towns have to agree that dissolving the district is in the best interest of both towns. And, and as we all know, in this stage with finances the way that they are, neither one of our communities could run their own school district, have their own school boards and have the potentially all of the liability that's still within the district. Because I can't imagine another town would let some town go and maintain all of the liability. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not a town decides to withdraw and then it's done. There's a lengthy process for that. And I don't know, Jason, if you wanted to add anything else, I don't know.
No, I think you, I think you hit the, all the, the main points there, Jane. Appreciate it.
Any questions from the board on this item? Or Peter, you're on mute. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Oh, I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation, Jane.
Sure. And I don't know if you want to wait for Adrian's petition or the citizens petition or you want me to address the school committee stipends, but you let me know.
Why don't we wait until we get to Adrian's? It's only a couple more down.
Okay, great.
Just discuss them all at once.
Would you talk now about the, um, the warrant article that they've proposed for this town meeting and their flexibility in moving it to an early fall, i.e. mid-September roughly timeframe? Sounds like it's acceptable to the folks here. And I think that should factor into when we get into that discussion. But to the extent you're on the matter right now, if you want to talk further on that.
Sure. So we were also on the call, Dr. DeFalco and I were also on the call with Jackie talking about the annual town meeting and the need to potentially pare down that meeting so that there's a minimal amount of time that people would have to be outside and not items of the warrant that might have more lengthy discussions associated with them. So similar in fashion to what the town of Blackstone did, they took the regional agreement amendments warrant item and moved that to a special town meeting, which they'll hold in early fall. And we had said we'd be amenable to that in Millville as well, provided they made kind of the same agreement with us, that it would be early fall, that it wouldn't be a November meeting, you know, or even an October meeting, but sometime soon thereafter Labor Day or, you know, early September timeframe. And, and it sounds like there are other items that may go on to a later meeting as well. But if there's a cost associated with that, because it's just a school committee item, then the school committee is willing to pay for the expense of having that meeting, but we'd want to have it in September.
Okay. And as at this point, Blackstone is agreeing to a September meeting, special town meeting for this particular item?
Yes, within the first two weeks of September.
Okay.
I think when you get to the warrant, I'm sure you're going to want to consider whether they are technically withdrawing your article at this point because of a commitment to, uh, you know, a not late fall town meeting.
Right. And I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that considering if it's just a school committee item, schools paying for the meeting. So I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, obviously, we'd have to vote on this, but if that's what we're talking about, Jane, is this something where you want to put a withdrawal request in at this point in time?
Well, I, I, I guess I'd like to see where the discussion goes on what's going to be the, the, you know, June meeting and what would be in a fall meeting.
Okay.
You know, I, I think if you're trying to pare down your meeting and there are going to be other things that also move to the fall, that may make more, you know, I guess I'd rather see where that discussion goes. But we are prepared to, to be amenable to the fall.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions at this point in time on the RAC? From the board or anyone else on the call? All right, thank you. So move on to the next item. New business, consideration of opening the limited town hall access to the public. Peter, did you want to discuss a little more on that or are you?
No, I think we're good. I think we'll, that's going to continue to evolve a little bit. But I just want to throw out the, you know, what I'm thinking. And I'd like to see us get to some point where we can have some limited access that ensures everybody safety on both sides of the doorway, if you will.
Right. And I would also share with other departments such as Senior Center, et cetera. We do have the CARES Act funds if we need that to bring in more PPE, bring in more other, other things that will help us serve the public, whether it be shields, et cetera.
That's right. And we've actually requested each department to identify what they envision needing for COVID-19 copulated items such as additional PPE through the end of June. And then separately, we'll be able to go back for the July through December timeframe. But we're pulling that together this week because we have to submit for, for this fiscal year some requests
Okay.
that are, are available, so.
All right, good. So, so, so Peter, um, I know we're talking about the town hall, but I do have, I was going to bring up later, and what are the towns doing? Because I assume in a town without a regional district, the school department is getting a portion of those CARES fund to get their schools prepared for the fall. So my question is, is in a regional committee, do we need to, you know, find out the schools' needs? Make sure, you know, that the towns' needs are met? Talk about, you know, how, how do we get, how do we do this? Because the school's not getting money and they're going to get hit. And they're going to either get hit without CARES funds money from us or, or our budget is going to get it. So either way, we're going to have to pay for the, the, you know, installation of things at all of our schools that we're responsible for. So I don't know how to stop that con, I shouldn't say I don't know how, but when do we stop that conversation? And who's in that meeting room to start talking about how do we access? I think between the two towns, we have $1.1 million in the CARES Act fund. But we need to make sure our kids are ready and safe when they go back to school.
Right, so I've had a conversation with Dr. DeFalco about that. And we've discussed and identified some items and he's, they're putting, you know, pulling together some information for us to include. And we want to help as much as we can their needs because what they have available, and Dr. DeFalco can talk further on it, is very limited. Again, just to reiterate, right now, the CARES Act money is not available to offset any revenue losses that are attributable to COVID-19, whether it's withheld monies from the state that they haven't shown their cards for yet. Might at some point in the future. But in any, certainly materials that the schools have purchased for MES and for Millville students and so forth that we want to be sure we included our submission of the funds available to us to help offset the burden at the school. And Dr. DeFalco can certainly talk more specifically.
Sure. Thanks so much. And you, you can tell we're all on the same kind of wavelength because I outreach Peter last week and said, hey, you know, we're, we're kind of in a jam with some of the resources we're going to need and our access to the CARES one is very, very limited. So we will get, as a school system, about 80%, at least it's projected, about 80% of our Title I funds, which is about $130,000. So, you know, it's, it's, it's certainly not a huge amount, but it will be helpful in helping us do a couple of other things regarding, you know, dealing with a potential revenue shortfall from the state as we look at FY '21. But when I outreach Peter, he was awesome. I mean, he didn't hesitate in terms of absolutely, you know, let's have a conversation with our, you know, accountant and figure out what, what we can make work. And, you know, we really, really appreciate that, Peter. Without, like I said, without hesitation, you jumped right in. So we talked about some things like, you know, some of the technology that we've, we've been able to provide to some families regarding some of, you know, the remote learning as a result of this. We talked about some of the cleaning materials and supplies we're going to need. There is a piece of equipment that actually purifies and sterilizes the air. It's about 4,000. We've already purchased one for Millville Elementary, the high school, middle school. And, you know, various other pieces of cleaning supplies and equipment that we're going to need to sterilize. So again, I, we couldn't be more grateful for, for Peter's support, for your support with that. So Jen, thanks so much for, for mentioning that.
Okay. I got three good reasons to worry about that.
Yeah, the challenge is missing opportunity that the town might have on this CARES Act. But we'll have another bite at that apple, basically, because it goes through the end of December. So we're trying to identify and proactively identify what we're going to need between now and the end of June, of this month, basically. What we needed, what we incurred so far and what we need through the end of this month. And then be ready to pull the trigger again in our request for the balance of the calendar year after that.
Jason, has it been discussed for, for the fall with the school openings? I'm assuming it's going to be a blanket open of not open for the state, but are they going to maybe say, well, if you have X, Y, and Z type of sanitation in your school, you can open? Or if you don't, have you heard anything of that flavor?
Yeah, so it's quite interesting. The commissioner has essentially established a state-level kind of think tank or panel of people that represent various groups to put together essentially what is being referred to as a reopening or recovery plan. And there are four main subgroups that are part of this group. One is teaching and learning, one is remote and physical learning space. The other is business and operations, and then social, emotional learning and behavioral health. And so the issues of what are those kind of checkpoints we'd have to have in place they're working on? I will say that what is sounding like will come out of this group is a recommendation for a potential hybrid reopening, a kind of a hybrid of remote learning and in-person learning, although we're not sure exactly what that will look like yet. Or a full opening and what that would require in order to make that happen. But exactly to your question, Erica, there will definitely be a series of safety provisions that we'll have to have in place and cleaning provisions. You might be aware, but we brought our full custodial staff back about a month ago. So they've already started. So they've already started, uh, in terms of, you know, deep cleaning and, and doing some summer projects and other things to get those out of the way because we know we're gonna have to put a lot of attention into the intricacies of making sure that we can, we can open safely in September.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussions? On those items? All right, Peter, you're all set with the town hall information for now?
Yes. And I think you and I should talk offline further.
All right, definitely. All right, old business, we have BMR High School graduation and parade application?
So all of the requisite signatures are in and it's just for you to sign. You've already been approved to do that and, uh, it's just we'll have a hard copy for you to sign, so.
Okay.
That, that's on and Dr. DeFalco's here if he wants to toot his horn on what they've got planned, but it sounds like a good event.
Yeah, and I'd love to thank the, the board for their support with this. Um, as you know, we're trying to be as creative as possible. Um, the Commissioner of Education, uh, came out very boldly and pointedly saying no in-person graduations, period, the end. Not until, uh, if possible, uh, I believe it's July 18th or 19th, and that all depends on our data, our statewide data. So what we did was, uh, kind of the headline here is we created, uh, a different opportunity to celebrate students. Um, and Friday at, um, about one o'clock, we're gonna be having students and their families arrive to the high school. We're gonna line them up in their cars alphabetically. Um, and at 1:30, we're gonna, uh, live premiere are all of our graduation addresses, our valedictorians, the principals, mine, uh, in one kind of seamless, um, video that families can watch while they're parked in their cars waiting, uh, for us to begin. Um, and, um, once that's finished, we're gonna start at two o'clock, the, uh, celebration, and we'll be having students essentially drive up one family at a time. The student will get out, get their diploma cover. Um, it will be contactless, so there's no exchanging of anything. What was so important to the seniors was they wanted to walk across, uh, the front steps. And that's just a traditional thing and it was something that they wanted to do. Uh, so we were able to build it around that. A graduate will walk up and, um, on the platform, take a picture, and then walk down, get back in their, uh, vehicle and essentially drive through a different part of the parking lot. Once we get through, uh, all graduates, there's about 106, um, we'll have the parade through the two towns and we'll actually go by all fours. So, yeah, we're really excited about that and, uh, very grateful for the support of the Board of Selectmen, so thank you so much.
Good job with the creativity and getting this done. It means a lot to these kids, so good job. Thank you.
So last week, you know, when I drove into Millville, I drove through your driveway there with all the pictures of each each one of the pictures and, yeah, it was a really special time for me just to do that. It's, uh, you know, a community's we're, it's a lot into making that happen. And everybody should be very proud of those students. You look at their pictures, the promise in their eyes, you know, they're all individuals. It's the future they have ahead of them. It's awesome. They worked hard to get there. Yeah, they're missing out a little bit on what a typical graduation, but I think you've done a wonderful job of coming up with a Plan B under the circumstances. So no, that's the families and these grads. It's, uh, it's exciting as all get out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? All right, town meeting logistics plan, consideration with town moderator. So I know that Jackie had put together a little bit of a task force and, um, I assume you've met at least once since our last meeting. Um, and I'm looking forward to hearing all the, uh, input and knowledge you guys have at this point in time.
Awesome. Thank you. I just wanna say too, um, to Dr. DeFalco and to Jane and, you know, anybody who was involved, the senior planning is really cool this year, you know, talk about making lemons, lemonade out of lemons, you know, I was impressed, like Peter said, with the signage. Um, this parade sounds awesome. The only thing I'm nervous about is if you're lining people up in alphabetical order, are they gonna have to parallel park? Like in between each other, I, I don't know the logistics of that, but you know, kudos to you guys. I'm, I'm trying to plan the town meeting and I see what a huge undertaking it is. So congratulations and kudos to you guys. I hope it all goes off on Friday without a hitch. All right, so to our annual town meeting, um, I did, I pulled together a task force of some key stakeholders that I thought of and we had a great meeting last week. I really appreciate everybody who took the time. I put together a PowerPoint last week and then I didn't realize that it wasn't recorded or anything and that's totally fine cause we were not an official board, we were not a committee, we didn't have to post a meeting. But it had some good points and some good information. So if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to share, um, I've edited the PowerPoint now based on the recommendations of that meeting. If I can walk you guys through a couple of things, is that okay?
Sure.
I can do a share screen here. Let me see. And it's pink, um, so it's kinda cool.
Okay.
After the meeting, I got a few, um, comments about, wow, that was pretty pink. So, Town of Millville Annual Town Meeting, um, 2020. So basically the reason that I put together this task force is because we are a legislative body, um, and that does include town meetings. So I just wanted to be clear from the beginning that we are exempt, our town meeting is exempt from the governor's orders limiting gathering bodies to less than 10 people. So to have an annual town meeting is completely appropriate and legitimate. Frank Bryan is a political scientist who studies town meetings and his statement is that real democracy demands first the presence of citizens, then comes deliberation. Third, the real democracy requires that no cohort of society be excluded. And finally, the amount of time devoted to deliberation needs to be sufficient. So if voters from any given segment of a population are not able to be represented due to a real or perceived threat such as COVID-19, they're afraid of getting sick, then the essence of the meeting is undermined and any actions taken at the meeting could be considered not legitimate. So my goal in doing this was how do we have a legitimate, a safe meeting? How do we ensure that all voters feel comfortable in attending and participating in our meeting? So what are other towns doing was one of the first things that I considered. So there are 86 towns that have participated in the Massachusetts Moderators Association Data Bank, where we've been gathering and collecting information to share with each other about what everybody is doing. Um, so of all of those 86 towns, only one town is not considering a consent agenda or just considering their financial articles. So the majority of the towns, 85 out of 86, are really trying to pare down and only vote on what is necessary for business. Most of them are using outdoor locations. You can see I've listed some football fields, stadiums, uh, town commons, bandstands, things like that. Those that are using indoor locations, it's pretty much gymnasiums or multiple rooms within a school building. And each of those rooms would need to have its own moderator and way to connect technologically to each other, allow speakers in each room, things like that. Remote participation, meeting a Zoom meeting is currently not, um, allowed for open town meetings, so we can not participate in a Zoom meeting. So Blackstone held their outdoor meeting on May 26th at BMR. They had six financial articles. They had 74 people in attendance and they were done in approximately 20 minutes. Um, all six articles were moved, voted, no discussion, and they were in and out. Um, Uxbridge is having two meetings, one for financial articles at the end of June, and then they're gonna have another one for remaining articles at a later time based on local recommendations from their Board of Health and Public Safety. They have a thousand seating location that has electronic devote, uh, voting devices that you can hand out, hold. So that's what they're doing. A majority of the towns are still waiting on governor's orders and local Board of Health or Public Safety recommendations to finalize a date. Um, so there are still a lot of towns within the Commonwealth that just haven't picked a date yet. Um, the stakeholders that I considered and invited to the meeting was Public Safety, the Board of Health, um, the Town Clerk, attendees, which included some voters. There were, the senior population was represented and we also have to consider non-voters. You know, people like the police chief who is not a town resident, the town council, um, Dr. DeFalco, you know, people who are gonna come but are not voters. Um, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committees were both represented. Peter was on our call. The Town Clerk was on the call and the moderator. I invited article sponsors, so there were people there representing, um, Jane and Dr. DeFalco. Uh, Capitol, Peter spoke a little bit on behalf of Capitol and, who, who, who is the other sponsor? I feel like there was one other article sponsor, that's okay. Um, any rest, and then we also need to consider the stakeholder, any residents wishing to speak at a common microphone. So we did have Jerry Finn on the line as kind of just a regular resident, um, obviously a very vocal and, and helpful when it comes to town meeting information. So space considerations, um, what are we preparing for? I asked the Town Clerk to pull us some data on previous town meetings. And you can see the highest number of attendees was obviously in, uh, 2016, I believe that was an override year. But on average, there's 141 attendees. So what I did was I took the required practical minimum area needed for 150 attendees with a six-foot distance in between participants, which is recommended for approximately 8,000 square feet, would be what is needed to have this kind of safe meeting. Okay, so with that in mind, you know, do we have an 8,000 square foot space that we can act, uh, safely hold this meeting? When we talk about the laser continuances, um, if an outdoor meeting is decided upon, it would be good to consider inclusion of a rain date when the warrant is actually posted. So that would be something that the Board of Selectmen, you know, would be charged with doing. The moderator can recess and continue a meeting at her discretion after the warrant is posted by the Board of Selectmen for up to 30 days. And that can be done multiple times, um, provided that a state of emergency is in effect. So if we did post a meeting and for some reason I felt that it was not safe, I could postpone it for up to 30 days at a time, and that can be done multiple times. And then if for some reason the meeting is suddenly unsafe, it could be due to weather, it could be, you know, COVID-related, somebody starts sneezing and, you know, everybody's getting nervous. If it's too late into the night and it got dark, um, we can motion to recess and resume at a later date and time. That's an option that's open any, anytime, not just COVID time. Um, you know, if, if, if a meeting ever goes too late into the night, we always have the option to recess it and pick it up at a later date. So I just wanted to make sure those were clear. Um, so the first option that the, that the group considered was to postpone to a later date. Without getting into too much detail here, um, this was not the option that everybody wanted. Uh, pretty much the group decided to hold firm with a June 22nd date and, and that's gonna be my recommendation as well, so we'll skip that. Option two is continuous plan. So hold the meeting June 22nd at Millville Elementary. So we looked at the auditorium where we normally sit and the group really thought that it would be kind of tight to arrange people in there with social distancing and that the airflow could be a concern. Uh, there is air conditioning in there, but to really keep it circulating and moving would be tricky. The gymnasium was considered. Um, this was a suggestion that Jerry Finn and I had talked about prior to the meeting and he did some great homework um, and figured out that we could do a deep cleaning of the area depending on, um, you know, how long we were in there, how thoroughly we needed it cleaned afterwards. It would be, you know, under that $5,000 to do the gym and the bathrooms. BMR was considered, so Blackstone did hold their meeting at BMR on the front steps, uh, two last week. And it worked out well. I wa- I went over there, uh, Jane was over there. Um, I talked to the moderator pretty extensively after the fact. Um, it works out well, but the issue with that is that currently there is not legislation that is approved to allow a town to hold a town meeting outside of its borders. So it's been proposed, uh, but I can tell you the legislation that has been proposed, so it's been approved by the House last Monday. Different wording was approved by the Senate on Friday, and right now they're trying to reconcile those two different versions. The language in that one bill contains three items. One is about moving outside of your town borders. The second is about reducing the quorum. So reducing, you know, if we have to have 40 registered voters, it says we could reduce to no less than 10% of that. So we could reduce to essentially four voters as our quorum. Um, and the third piece of it has to do with regional town meetings, uh, excuse me, representative town meetings. So we are called an open town meeting. All of our residents in our town can attend. There are big cities, say a Boston, where not every, uh, citizen can attend who's a registered voter. It's, it's a representative town meeting. So there's language in that same bill about three different issues, quorums, uh, regional, uh, representative town meetings being able to vote electronically is essentially what the language is around. And this one, because what was signed by the House and the Senate are very different, I'm not sure if that will be reconciled and approved by the governor in time for us to post a warrant to say that we wanna have a meeting in Blackstone. It's a gamble. I, I don't know, it's not my warrant to post, that has to have, it has, have a location in it, but at this time it would not be okay to post that warrant. So the third option, or the next option that we considered was the Millville Elementary ball field. Um, I looked up pricing for tent rentals if we wanted to consider renting a tent. Um, not that every chair would need to be under there, but, um, if we wanted to put some under, uh, you know, provide shady areas for, you know, some people, um, so there were prices for that. I looked at chair rentals, uh, if they're not available, which I think Peter confirmed, we would have to rent. Um, table rentals, and there's already a porta potty on site, so if we decided to go that route, we would have to, um, figure out if we could use the porta potty. Blackstone did not have a bathroom available. Um, so I don't know if that's a requirement or not. I think that might be a Board of Health, um, question, but I just figured I'd throw it on there. I have two slides of additional considerations of things that we would wanna need, you know, everything from PPE and kind of, I went back and updated this with my hotkey in terms of who would be responsible for each of these items that we discussed. Um, you know, having PPE, um, I talked about our temperature's gonna be taken. A lot of towns are doing that. Our Board of Health said it was not necessary. Town clerk will bring plexiglass for the tellers to sit behind, ask residents to use hand sanitizer. Uh, talking about how we give the handouts, right? We can't leave them on a table for everybody to pick up. Uh, they would have to be handout, handed out by the clerks wearing gloves. Um, setting up tables and chairs to maintain social distancing. We'll need, um, households can sit together, so if a husband and wife come, they can sit together, but all the chairs would need to be spaced, obviously, six feet apart. Four sections, um, voters with masks, which would be the majority of the people there. And then a section for voters who can't wear a mask due to a medical reason. Um, non-voters with masks, and then non-voters if they had any without a mask due to a medical reason. There would need to be four distinct and separate sections for that. Um, areas need to be caution taped off, um, making sure that people don't just wander in and sit down. Everybody has to be checked in. Uh, Tim, you know, confirmed because he's awesome that he can get us some microphones and speakers and that outdoor arrangements wouldn't be an issue. Um, we weren't sure quite what the electrical needs were gonna be on the field, I, for, if we have microphones or speakers or things like that, what does the electricity look like over there? Um, well, we need to provide the tent, uh, bottled water if it's hot and potentially insect repellent or sunscreen, uh, depending on, you know, when it is, what the weather happens to be. This is the last, last one, I promise. Sick voters should be told to remain at home. You know, they'll definitely have to be messaging around that. Communicate these plans out to the public prior to the meeting so that they know what to expect upon arrival. I think the Board of Selectmen will have to, you know, somehow get information out to people as what they should expect. Uh, set time limits for speakers. I currently do that. Talk about signage that's needed, right? Reminding people to wear masks, sanitize their hands, kind of directional, which way to walk, which way not to walk. Um, talking about when people wanna speak, right? They'll raise their hand and have to wait to be called on as opposed to lining up the microphone. Mark paths with arrows for walking to and from the microphone so that speakers are not walking past each other. Uh, we'd wanna have alcohol wipes in a trash can available at the microphone so that everybody who gets up to speak, uh, can wipe the microphone before and after they speak. Um, the moderator should still be on a raised platform somehow so the voters can see and so that I can see when the votes are called. This one here will be huge for you guys. We'll use a consent agenda, so that would be something that you would need to discuss and, and set up based on the warrant that's posted. Um, an exit and dismissal plan by row would have to be established. I would obviously announce it and dismiss people by row enforced by public safety. We'll use cards to vote as opposed to yelling yay or nay, right? The less we talk, the less the spread is. So Town Clerk agreed that she'll bring some, some brightly colored cards that we can hold up like we normally use for the secret ballot voting. Um, again, with the restroom question, um, whether it's inside the gymnasium or outside, kind of would they be cleaned? Um, hold a public hearing ahead of time so that voters understand the articles that are gonna be on the warrant, that they can ask questions ahead of time. Um, so I think, you know, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee usually have hearings. One of the questions was, is the Millville Ball Field handicap accessible? Um, in my opinion, there's two entrances when you're facing the fields, the one on the left closest to the baseball diamond where the big rock is with, uh, Mr. Dean's plaque on it. There is a paved walkway in there, so if there were some chairs set up along that, I think it would be okay. Um, I'm certainly not an ADA expert, but I would imagine that we could make that work. Um, the time meet, the timing of the meeting is important. Uh, do we wanna have it maybe at a 6:00 PM as opposed to we normally do seven? Um, do we wanna, you know, try Um, do we want to, you know, try to make sure that we have lighting on site in case it does get dark? Or would we recess? Kind of what would that plan look like? And I do want to confirm that any additional costs incurred, uh, for this town meeting are allowable under the federal funds that we, um, will be receiving for the CARES Act. Um, Peter confirmed that, and, and I had that information as well. So the moderator's recommendations to the board of selectmen would be to safely and swiftly hold our annual town meeting on Monday, June twenty-second at the Millville Elementary Ball Field at six PM. I'd ask that you limit the number of articles to those that are necessary to operate the town in FY twenty-one, and again, with the assumption that we would have another town meeting at a later date. Uh, the budget may have to be revisited at a later date in the fall, depending on the state's, uh, budget and, and, you know, allocations that we receive. So if we could swiftly and safely, uh, you know, get business done that needs to be done, I think that would be great. Um, and then, you know, with the assumption that we would have something again in the fall to kind of clean up and encompass more. And I just wanted to say a huge thank you to everyone who participated in last week's call. Uh, Millville's lucky to have so many dedicated people working together to ensure a safe meeting. And I would just say if there's anybody in town watching this after hearing some of my recommendations or things that I'm considering, if there is something that I missed, please do reach out and let me know. Um, my email is moderator@millvillemass.org. Um, so I would welcome any additional comments and feedback. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to the board if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, um, thank you very much for putting this together. Thank you to the whole team that had the input to put this, um, information together. It, it's a lot of information.
Email it to you guys too, if you want.
Right.
There's, there is a lot, I'm happy to email it off.
Yeah, that would be great, much appreciated. I am happy to see that the recommendation is to hold the meeting on June twenty-second, um, because, uh, for many reasons. Um, so my question is, is if we hold this meeting June twenty-second with, um, you say we should have the rain date listed on the warrant if we're going to do it outside?
That would be my recommendation, yeah. And then, you know, there just have to be a lot of communication if for some reason you chose to delay it. Um, now there'd have to be communication ahead of time by the board saying we're not gonna hold it on the twenty-second, we'll hold it on whatever that rain date is.
Right, okay. All right, what other questions do we have from the board here?
I don't have any questions.
The other thing too, if I may, I sat with Capital, so we met last Wednesday, and Capital, other than Peter, um, was not able to attend. They took a vote of articles that they were gonna recommend. I'm not sure if Capital gave you that, but they had five articles that they were, that they had submitted for the warrant, and they kind of prioritized. And I think that they had two that they wanted to keep on the agenda and that they were okay with taking the other three, kind of what school committee did with the rack, and say we could probably push those off until the fall.
Mm-hmm, right.
So I believe those were the police cruiser and the highway truck with a plow, not the front-end loader, the highway truck with a plow.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk more about what Capital's talking about when you get to the warrant articles.
Yep.
And you, you know, there was, I, I see I got, uh, the town administrators in pink on a lot of those assigned things there, Jack. Just, you know, volunteer for any of those, but, uh, understand.
Right, you, you didn't, Peter, that's all my doing, but I mean, I, I.
I'm just teasing.
Normally who coordinates it.
I, I'm just teasing.
Okay.
And so the other thought was, again, to the extent that, uh, BMR High School, which was proven and is, you know, better set up for that, would be ideal, subject to there, it's not a known, it's, it's probable but not for certain. And, uh, we had council provided some input, and I sent that to the board. Um, and you really have ten days to basically change the venue location. So June twelfth, you have, June twelfth is a board. You can put on the warrant, but then you can notify the public that the venue location is changing. You gotta do that within ten days before. So that's just something to, in thinking about the actual location.
Can you send that to me too, Peter? I didn't.
Sure will, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I don't feel, I don't like that because it's gonna be a lot of people are gonna miss it, and you're gonna have people showing up at one location. I mean, if, if it's legal, it's legal, it's just a risky thing to do is change it ten days before because somebody can look at it and then, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here. We're gonna have to decide what we think is best overall, so.
I think the communication, it's gonna be tricky, it's gonna be different this year than anything that's ever done before. So as much as can be decided ahead of time and, you know, kind of ironed out, I think will be incommunicated, would, would be helpful.
Right, and Jane had mentioned in the, in the chat here, it's, um, BMR district property, not one town property, would legally hosting a meeting out of town? I think it's still out of town, I mean.
Yeah, they talked about the physical borders of the town, I think, in the, in the statute.
Yeah, so. Okay, any other questions for Jackie? All right, next item we have, um, Adrian's up here, the citizens petition she submitted for the BP, BBT stipend at our last meeting. She wanted to, um, speak on that tonight.
Hi, yes, thank you, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think maybe it, it makes sense to have this conversation, um, in conjunction with Jane, and, um, but essentially, I think I had provided some information to, um, Erica as the board of selectmen chairperson to kind of bring to the board, and also, um, this information was, you know, basically me just kind of trying to figure out a little bit more about how stipends work at BMR, um, in relation to the BBT stipend I was proposing. Um, and it seems like there may be some confusion about even what the BMR stipend requirements are. So I think maybe have a bigger conversation about stipends in general for our school committee members for the town. And given kind of what the resolution is there, it may make sense, and I'm happy to withdraw my petition now to add this to the warrant. I know you guys haven't even voted on whether to open it, however, with some kind of more clarification about what are the actual rules for both BMR and BBT stipends? Should there be an article on our town warrant annually for both and, and how that should be handled? And since I'm not the expert on this, um, you know, I'll certainly kind of let Jane speak to it if she'd like to, and then also I'd like to hear if you guys have done any more research or, um, around kind of what the requirements are in general.
Is that okay, Erica?
Yes, yes, I'd actually love it if you would speak on, um, just kind of highlight the, what you had sent us an email. I think it'd be good just to start the conversation there about the different ways that we can and cannot do stipend.
Okay, so Adrian, um, approached me with her citizens petition, um, and she asked very specific questions, and I, um, started to look at both the policies and the state law. Um, and the state law actually says that school committee members cannot receive a stipend unless the communities that they represent vote, um, to give them one, essentially. I mean, it's much longer than that, I sent you the actual wording, but, um, that's the bottom line of it. So, um, what it doesn't say is, does, does, do towns have to vote annually? Do towns vote, um, you know, every single year? Uh, for those of you who have followed this, Blackstone has on its warrant every single year, school committee stipends, how much time a, um, commu, uh, board member, school committee member has to serve, what percentage of meetings they have to attend to receive their stipend, when the stipends are paid. So we, so Dr. DeFalco sent that to our legal counsel, um, and they in fact did look into that further and say that Blackstone is right, and, and Millville would need to do the same, that annually that would need to be a warrant item, um, on the annual town meeting to have school committee members from Millville receive a stipend. I believe it used to be on the Millville warrant years ago, Jen, you may remember?
Yeah, it, it always was, it always was, and when it came off, we had questioned it, and it was kind of said, you know, um, it was okay, and it, you know, the requirements, and, and then we believe that Blackstone kept theirs on because this is based upon that percentage of meeting, attendance at a meeting.
Yeah, so, and.
So, but it was always on.
Yeah, it used to, and, and I, so I don't, can't tell you when it came off, I can't tell you why it came off, that's before my time. But our, our legal counsel indicated that it did need to be a warrant item. So I don't know if that's something that the school committee needs to submit every year. Um, the Blackstone one says submitted by the superintendent of schools, although I don't believe Dr. DeFalco submitted that, um, because he had to do it on behalf of the school committee, and, and I don't think we did, well, I know we didn't do that, so. Um, so I think Blackstone just automatically does it, um, and why Millville stopped, I don't know. So the question I have to the selectmen is, does it become a warrant item this year, which it was not submitted by us, um, which means you'd have to open your warrant and, and add a thing, or does it get left off? And then the question the school committee will have to, um, address is what happens if one town approves it and the other town doesn't? Um, but there's no legal guidance on that at all. And essentially what it would be, it would be very similar to what BBT has in that, you know, every representative of, of BBT from a different community has a different stipend depending on what that community chooses to do. Um, so it could in fact be that Blackstone folks on the school committee receive a stipend and Millville folks do not, if that's what the town decided, or it doesn't get on a warrant. But to receive a stipend, there would need to be a warrant item in Millville annually. Does that make sense? Clear?
Probably.
I just want to comment that I kind of was trying to see, like, what other district would have something similar? Um, because, so I pulled up Mendon and Upton's articles, and I don't see anything in their articles. They're a regional district as well, so it's, oh, for BBT or for, um, their regional school district. So it's just kind of interesting to kind of look around. I didn't see anything in Oxbridge's warrant article either, but I'm not sure. And I tried to look at their budget, I'm like, does it have like a separate line item for their budget? Is that why it gets approved through that process? I don't know, but it is an interesting kind of, you keep picking the onion back and more questions.
Maybe that Mendon-Upton don't receive, and because the, the state law, that school committee members should not receive a stipend unless approved by, at a town meeting. So, um, so maybe Mendon-Upton school committee members don't receive a stipend.
So, does anybody know how many years we haven't been voting on a stipend for our school committee members?
Specifically, I have no idea, but I, in the time that I've been chair, I can tell you I have never submitted one.
So I had council look into this today, and I forwarded the board at six oh six tonight. So you, I'm sure you didn't have a chance to look at it. Um, a little back and forth I had with him, because his initial, uh, review was very detailed and, and complex. And again, I use the word gray, it's a gray night, I guess. It, it's subject to interpretation. And so I basically responded to him that I, I couldn't really understand exactly what he was saying. It seems like, and, and I'll just give you my words, I said, I'm not sure whether this needs to be on the warrant or not. And so I think we, you know, I'm saying, and I'm leaning to that we can be consistent with as we have in the past, where we have no specific article, but where the BMR budget is approved by the voters, and it's known that there are BMR stipends, the BMR school committee members getting stipends in that budget, in the certified budget. And, uh, that's in accordance with the regional agreement, uh, enforced. And he came back and said, um, you know, unless it's put forth by a citizens petition or, as you say, the superintendent or the school committee, uh, it does not appear that there needs to be an annual vote under section, chapter seventy-one, section fifty-two. He, he's not even sure why it's on Blackstone. So he's reading a different, he's making a different legal interpretation than BMR's legal counsel. And so, um, there is no exact right way is my, uh, my take of what I'm reading here, and either party is wrong in what they're doing, but they're inconsistent between the towns, obviously.
So I was gonna bring that up, Peter, um, you know, if it's embedded in the budget, you're looking at the, you're looking at the percentage split. And I don't think Millville should be, um, paying the twenty-eight percent for our members while the other district is picking up. We're paying for each other's at the, um, enrollment rate, and I don't think that's proper. Um, I think the, the town should be paying their own committee members, um, their stipends.
That's not in the regional agreement nor in the current regional agreement draft, because the way it defines how operating costs are allocated, and these are treated as operating costs, unless you bring them back to the towns directly as you seem to be suggesting.
But when Blackstone has theirs as a line item on their warrant, stipends for our school committee members, is that still part of the split, or are they paying a hundred percent of those stipends? Because they're voting on it and Millville's not. Do we know the answer to that?
I guess that's meant as who's writing the check to them.
So, so they vote on it as a warrant item, but it is not a budget item, um, like their other stipends that they also vote on ours. So there's not a separate line by, line item budget for the school committee stipends? Because it's in the school committee budget, as Peter, um, indicated.
So it's a shared cost?
Well, it, that's such a hard, um, in essence, yes, because it does add up to the bottom line. Um, but I want to caution people when they say twenty-eight percent and seventy-eight percent, that's of the additional ex- expenses and transportation, and it's used on joint capital projects. It's not twenty-eight percent of the entire school district budget. It's like twenty-eight percent of ten percent, or fifty percent, or forty percent, or whatever percent, but it's not, oh, it's not twenty-eight percent of the whole entire budget. So it, it, it's hard to say what portion one would be paying over the other, but.
It's the perception, um, sometimes, and not really the numbers of appropriateness.
Right, so it's twenty, it's your twenty-eight percent or your enrollment percentage share of the amounts over the minimum local contribution, uh, for those operating and transportation costs, essentially. And that's what's into your regional agreement, and these are costs that are included in the total costs that are apportioned, whether through minimum local contribution or the, uh, enrollment percentage.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, because I just pulled up the article for the Blackstone, um, warrant article, and it says, to see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone-Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services. So I don't know, it's not specific to Blackstone members, you know what I mean? I think it's overall approving the stipends, and again, I'm not an attorney, but.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Specifically stating Blackstone members, it's saying the members of that Blackstone-Millville Regional School District, or Regional District School Committee.
So again, according to Millville's legal counsel, I quote, "There is no obligation to put an article on now."
Well, then, I guess from that perspective, um, back to kind of my initial citizens petition, then I think that we need to somehow incorporate something that, um, brings equitability to the BBT. So, um, I don't know if you had council look at that at all to kind of think about whether that was something that you could legally add to a bylaw or not, but, um, but I certainly then would like you to still entertain that idea, whether or not we need to defer it to a different meeting is kind of another story, but.
So long story short, you're not withdrawing it at this point in time, is that what you're saying?
I'll withdraw it for the next meeting.
Okay. And then maybe, uh, I think at that point in time, we can get some more guidance and clarity on the whole stipend around all school committee members in general.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, um, for Adrian or Jane around stipends for committee members? Thank you, guys, appreciate your time. Next item, warrant, warrant articles, update and discuss, uh, finalization of our warrant. I'm of the opinion to keep this, um, meeting short based on feedback from our task force that essentially was put together based on, um, other towns. Um, I really think it's important that we do have this meeting sooner rather than later for many reasons. Um, but obviously, the primary, um, goal of this, uh, annual town meeting is to get our budgets, um, voted upon by the citizens. So I think we should kind of look at the, um, warrant and decide if, um, everything we want is on there, or, um, any other discussions we want to have at this point in time for other articles that were brought forth, um, and then just the warrant in general. Um and then just the warrant in general. And I know that there was two warrants um that were sent out to us today, Peter. Uh I ended up printing out the second one, I believe. I believe that was the one that was reviewed by counsel uh once again. Um is that the is that the version we're looking at now? Was there any other?
I I didn't print that one out. I just forwarded you his comments that he was okay and he was and he was stating that we do need to have that one article to the ratification of the union contract.
Okay.
That he did some minor wordsmithing of the rest of it. So e- either way, the sequence is the same. And if you want to just talk through the sequence, the war will, you know, that you will need to come in to sign will not include the explanations. The what you've been looking at so far and what Brian reviewed briefly include the explanations which are there for your context and understanding. But I think under the uh uh guise of what here you have the school committee withdrawing the rack subject to a soon in the early fall uh type of meeting. Um I think I heard Adrian withdrawing hers until the fall town meeting. But you that the um the citizen's petition has been withdrawn until a fall town meeting um warrant. So what it leaves you is basically which ones of these are the business of the town to continue, right? And I I'll talk about capital when we get to it, but I I would just rip through and say, I think you need to have article one. It's sort of the rules of the monetary. You need to have article two because there are eight, at least one bill of a prior year.
Yeah.
Okay. You need to have the snow and ice deficit article three. Uh you need to have the article for uh chapter ninety fund highway department article. These are all standard ones, uh cable license fees. Okay, article five.
Yeah.
Article six, seven, and eight, you could defer. You might not want to defer article six. Just as a matter, but I think you can defer those.
Okay, uh Peter, could you just say what those are?
Sure. So article six is funding OPEB's.
Okay.
Article seven is transferring free cash to the capital stabilization fund. And article eight is again transferring typically free cash to the general stabilization fund. So it's really moving free cash into three different places. But the the one might want to be put free cash away at this time.
Right. Right. So I think that those articles are important um and to move the money from free cash to stabilization is very important. But I'm also um being mindful of the time that it usually takes and the discussion it takes on those items. Um so obviously, the and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, is there any risk having it left in free cash until a fall town meeting?
No, it really is. Uh the free cash is going to remain available, un- unlike prior years. If you don't use it, you lose it on July first, basically, and got to wait till the next certification of free.
Right.
Uh under the new rules, under the COVID nineteen rules here, the pandemic, um the the state is allowing free cash to ma- remain available. So well, we have uh certified free cash of nine hundred and six thousand dollars, six thirty nineteen. That's available to put away or save and put away at the fall meeting, but it's still not going to go away.
Well, I also think um depending on what we discuss on the capital items, we may want to move stabilization funds um after we discussed the capital items. So I think maybe hunting the stabilization movements until the fall town meeting may be a good idea, just saving time at the uh June twenty-second meeting. Looking for some input from the board as well here and the thoughts on.
Yeah, I agree. I agree doing leaving le- leaving them for the fall is going to be able to still address them um without taking up a lot of time at this abbreviated meeting to get the budget certified and and going. You know, it's not like the money is being reallocated somewhere else without approval. It still needs all town meeting vote. Um you know, we need our budget in place. And I think also not only um, you know, if we're deferring some capital items to later, I think we need to have that there. And we honestly don't know what is in store from the state budget. That's going to be handed down to us um with everything that's going on. So I'm okay with deferring those to the fall.
All right, Andrew, you have any input?
Yeah, I think it'll be fine if we can defer them.
So Peter, I'm I'm um saying we can defer six, seven, and eight um to a fall town meeting here.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Yep. Then article nine is the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And one of the other thoughts you might want to have, again, in the abbreviated and the the effort to have moved things through quickly in the meeting health reasons and other reasons is the order of things. And I don't know if it matters or not, but just I just point that out to you.
Right.
This is the big kahuna that we really want to get covered. Want to move that up or not, may or may not matter, but I just point that.
Okay.
Article ten would be the union contract ratification, and that's just something that isn't in the warrant. So I think you have to briefly open and close for that. And Brian provided the specific wording as I requested from him. It's a very sharp one, and it's just a, it's really an administrative matter, but it's a legally administrative matter.
Okay.
So that right now is listed as article ten.
Okay.
In the drafts you're looking at, okay?
Yep, got it.
Then we get into the capital items, articles eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, okay? And I know the ca- I did, I was unable to make the uh capital meeting the other night where they did vote to hold off uh or to vote to basically withdraw. The police department computers, the police department tasers in the highway department front loader backhoe and retain the police department cruiser, which is article twelve and article fourteen, the highway department truck with plow, okay?
So keeping eleven and fourteen and then pushing the others to the fall will push.
Keeping twelve and fourteen is what they they said, but actually the chair had said uh that I would be bringing to you that I think it's critical that we keep articles eleven, the police department computers and the police department tasers. Each one is a ten thousand dollar capital ask. Each one is critical. The computers, uh right now, some of the the computers don't work with some of the equipment uh that they're currently using, some of the systems there. They're on seven, which is no longer supported. So we're high risk computers were not replaced, if we don't replace these sooner than later. So I I recommend keeping that one in. And I recommend tasers because tasers are now out of date and therefore they can't use them. And about a police officer getting ready to
Yeah.
He puts his gun on for, he or she puts their gun on first, and then they put their taser on. So arguably, that could be a uh actually a change in working conditions. And there you have union grievance if not the safety issues alone. So I think those two, they're each one is a ten thousand dollar uh need to satisfy uh what to me and in discussions with the chief sound fairly uh urgently needed.
Okay, so you're suggesting only pushing off uh one out of the five is.
That's correct. Yes. And I spoke to Brian Malali regarding that pushing that off. Some of his work for the summer was basically contemplating utilizing that. But then he said some of that work won't get done until probably the time there'd be a fall town meeting or that. And it's real value added uh comes into play in the um, you know, the winter snow and ice season. Because I asked him, you know, if you don't have this, is there additional cost that we should put into the budget, for example? And right now, the answer is no. If we don't have.
So Peter, my only my only question is, is because um capital planning voted on which articles to push off and which ones to keep. I don't know if we can just, we should just keep.
Well, so I here's what I would suggest is that you keep them in because the what you got to post a warrant by
Yeah.
noon time Monday.
Yeah.
Be withdrawn by capital at that point. I don't know the whether you've received official withdrawal or we're only operating what we know from capital.
Yeah. So I I do have some emails I have to go through. Um and also, I think we have um Jennifer Gill is actually watching the meeting now. She wants to chime in here and let us know. We can open it up uh if she's still on. She wants to speak on this item, considering I wasn't at the last meeting.
Yep.
Erica, this is Jackie. Can I just say one quick thing too? Um in terms of the moderator, so the capital committee voted to make a recommendation to your board, but at this time, it's the board of selectmen's warrant. So you guys get do get to choose which articles stay or which articles you strike. Um that was that that what they voted on, what I said, is that they're voting on their recommendation to your board. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right, maybe she's not there. All right.
I sent her the link.
Okay. Is she still on? But do you know? I just want to get the input because I I'm typically at that meeting and I wasn't, so I don't know if there's something else that was discussed and I didn't watch it that we should know about before we make the decision.
Erica, while you're waiting for her, can I just make one quick suggestion too? So in terms of those first five articles, and I like Peter's point about making sure you strategically align everything. Those first five are very generic, very basic. They're always on. So I would recommend as you post those, if you could do those as a consent article, um that way there, if nobody objects, we can just do one vote for all five.
Yep, understand. Thank you.
And I think we can also include for that consent to agenda, um the fire department uh union.
Yeah. Okay. Uh Jennifer Gill, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Did you want to chime in on any of the um uh articles that were discussed at last week's meeting?
Yeah, we just tried to do them in priority order, thinking that um with Jackie joining our meetings, there'd be another meeting in early September. So we thought some of those things to wait, but Jackie is exactly right. Using just our recommendations. So if this board feels otherwise, you would prioritize them differently. That's perfectly fine. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Peter, did you have a discussion with the police chief in regards to the computers and the tasers and the need?
Yes.
Is that is that would space your recommendation? Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to check with him, make sure that he was uh would be comfortable either delaying on these or not. But you know, if you look at it, you've got computers that are Windows seven, therefore no longer supported and frankly, not working with some of the other equipment, as I say. And the tasers are uh uh, you know, out of date, basically. They've expired. And so we need tasers.
Okay. All right. So backhoe loader was the one that we said fall or was that?
Yes.
All right. Brian was good with that. Oops. I just forgot on you guys. Um how does the board feel about the capital items?
I'm 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 good with Peter's recommendations. I mean, if the police chief feels that our police department needs those items, then I think they should be addressed.
I'll leave those for now, and then we can vote on it at the end. All right, number sixteen, that was regional agreement. Which is.
So that's being withdrawn, as you heard, subject to uh comfort, I guess, or I don't know, promise or what to uh of a fall town meeting that's not too late in the fall.
Special town meeting within the first week of.
Well, then that within September and, you know, mid-September timeframe would be the thing I would look, uh recommend you consider.
That sounds good.
I am in agreement with that because that one is going to be a lengthy article, and I think it needs a lot of discussion. So. And I believe seventeen was already withdrawn.
Withdrawn again there, you know, they're they're happy to hold off until the fall town meeting.
And that was the senior tax work off.
Senior tax work off, yep. So I have formal withdrawal of that.
Okay. So um we do need to open the warrant.
So I make a motion to open the annual town um meeting warrant of June was it twenty-second?
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we got it open.
So I make a motion. Um well, uh yeah, I'll make a motion to um accept the annual town meeting warrant for the um union ratification of the fire department uh agreement.
Okay, was there specific verbiage we needed for that, Peter? Was that?
I have that, and that will be in the hard copy of the warrant that will be prepared for you, Earl, basically.
Okay. Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to close the warrant of uh annual town meeting, June twenty-second.
Um do we need to pull any of these articles out and move them around before we close it?
No, that will be a vote. We just open to allow another article in, and then we'll make a motion on the um the with the warrant itself.
Okay. Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So are we um are we considered in agreement with the recommendations that were put forth um by Peter uh for canceling um removing six, seven, eight, thirteen, and sixteen?
Hold on. I want to.
Oh, you should know. You gotta keep it up.
The same. I'm not used to dealing with paper. Six, seven, eight, yep. What was the next one you said?
Six, seven, eight, thirteen.
Oh, I think fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
We're keeping thirteen. Come on, Jen, keep up.
Oh, then I had them in the wrong spot. Okay, so hold on. So fifteen is out and fifteen is in. Okay. Sixteen and then seventeen. Okay, so we're removing OPEB, free cash to stabilization, free cash to stabilization. The backhoe. The regional agreement. And the citizen's petition was removed on its own.
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Okay. Does anyone like totally not agree with that and wants to?
I'm in agreement with it.
Any of them?
No.
So I'll make a motion to accept the articles for the annual town me- meeting abbreviated version for June twenty-second as one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Did I get those right?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um what is our opinion on um time change for the meeting? Should we change it to six o'clock in case we have it outside? Or is that? I'd like to post it with the right time, our. I'd like to post it with the right time, our original posting.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah. Okay.
So you want to change it to what? Six?
PM.
Okay.
And says Millville Elementary on it so that even if we do it outside, we don't have to. Change that, which is good.
One more thing to note, sorry, the night before that Sunday is actually daylight savings times. So we'll actually gain another hour as well. So hopefully by starting at six, right now it's light until about eight o'clock, but with daylight savings, it should be close to nine. So that should be sufficient time to get, especially if we just pared it, if you guys just pared it down. But I just did want to point that out too. We'll have a little bit of extra daylight in there.
Alright, let's hope we don't go past nine on a pared down warrant.
Do we have another daylight savings? I'm sorry to interrupt. This is probably inappropriate, but didn't we just have one in March?
Yeah, it's not daylight saving. It's just the longest day of the year.
Oh, is that what it is? Sorry, sorry, the longest time, not changing the clocks, but it's the longest day.
The longest amount of daylight.
Alright.
Thank you, Adrian, sorry. I was like, what?
Alright.
Summer solstice.
There we go.
So we probably want to have a rain date. Identified on this, right?
Yes.
And Blackstone did just the next day.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
The next day?
Especially you're gonna have chairs, materials, equipment.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, if it is outside. Jackie, one question for you. I know you looked at prices for chairs and tents, et cetera. Did you ask if these were available in the places you're calling? I assume they are with people canceling parties now.
It did. The guy was great. Last year we had a community event and I rented a dunk tank from Taylor Rental on Mechanic Street in Bellingham. And I think Peter said that that's who Blackstone used for their meeting as well. And when I called him, I explained exactly what I was doing and he said, you know, not a problem, you know. He could even reserve it for us and not charge us. It's not a huge, you know, a Monday night, it's not a huge. In demand, hot and heavy date. So he said, you know, you could even call me just, you know, a day or two before and tell me what you need. Exactly the numbers that you're anticipating, you know, he said it wouldn't be a problem. And you know, he'd be fine to hold it. And then if we did not need it, he wouldn't charge us.
Okay, sounds good. So I think it does make sense to do it for the next day. Same time, June twenty third at six PM. For the rain date.
That's fine with me. I would just make sure the town clerk is available as well.
Yeah.
But it's fine with me.
Okay.
So do we want to? Just take a vote on that? And are we gonna get together prior? For recommendations? That's the only other thing.
I I believe we already made recommendations.
Think on all of them.
Not on all of them. Yeah, we're gonna have to have another meeting.
Workshop before.
Yeah, we're gonna have, yeah, some other items too.
Okay. Alright, so I make a motion to change our annual, change the annual town meeting to be at six PM. With a rain date of Tuesday, June twenty third at six PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Alright. Any other discussions around a warrant article? At the end of this meeting, we'll discuss. Workshop slash meetings for next week that we're going or later this week, whatever we we need to meet. Okay. Alright, latest budget status. I saw a revised budget come through today. Some extra costs. That have come through regarding schools. Were there any other big changes?
So those are the big changes where we finally got the head counts. Just actually this morning, of students going to Norfolk Aggie to Tri-County Voke. And so that increased the cost as from what you've seen previously. Those two schools accounted for almost sixty seven thousand dollars of additional budget needs. Based on the head counts, you know, going to schools. And in the meet and while. Putting that through, I took another look at the, you know, various items and true them up a little bit. Look for places where I could find some savings. So for example, like. Town hall building, maintenance and repairs, I reduce that by another couple of thousand dollars. We have town hall admin and office supplies. I reduce that by three grand. I increased, I had reduced street lighting, but then looking at the trend and now we're capturing. The debits and credits, right? Street lighting, I put that to about a thousand dollars a month, basically is what's in there. That's what we're tracking at. I reduced the fuel a couple of grand. Because fuel costs are down, so town fuel. And so I just took another look at, you know, all the various line items. And I looked at revenues and I, you know, it was a little less conservative in one or two areas of revenues. So ba- so basically where we're at now, instead of a twenty seven thousand dollar deficit, we're at eighty two thousand. And I forwarded this off to Finance Committee Chair. So she knows where we're at as well and they'll have to do some of their, you know. Digging around and evaluating various budgets at this stage beyond what they've already done.
Okay, so so you said we increased head count to schools outside of the district?
Yes.
Which where which school was it? One or two or?
So we went.
Cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at the budget for Norfolk Aggie.
Yep, we added one student there.
So for twenty from from twenty fiscal year twenty to twenty one, we added one student? Are we losing a student? Are they graduating?
No, so we have, we've gone from two to three students.
So I'm looking at the budget and I think it's the one from today. I have it at a hundred and two thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty, is that correct?
Okay, so you're looking at Norfolk Aggie, sorry. Yeah, Norfolk Aggie. So our our transportation cost remains the same based on our current provider. And what they estimate for next year. So gone from three students to five students, or they're going from three students to five students.
Three to five, okay.
Aggie, so the the tuition cost. Line item there. Went from what was on the prior budgets was reflecting the number of same number of students. With a modest increase. It went seventy five thousand to a hundred and eighteen thousand.
I must have a, let me see the budget, because the budget I have has that it's seventy three and it went to seventy five.
Yeah, and so today I changed it to a hundred and eighteen. So that went up this afternoon.
Okay, maybe this is the one I downloaded.
You may not have gotten to that.
Okay, I'll look at that.
Okay.
I thought I was looking at.
And likewise, Tri-County. Went from. Forty nine seven to almost seventy five thousand, one other student. The tuition.
So they added one student to Tri-County and two students to Norfolk Aggie.
That's correct.
Alright.
And those aren't finalized. Those don't get finalized till July first.
I know, I know.
That's their best, you know, who they've accepted and so, you know, are are accepting. And who's who's applied, that's those are the head counts.
So that's our worst possible case for us then at this point in time.
That we know of, yes.
Okay.
Unless someone's waitlisted and is accepted.
Right, they didn't, they didn't mention that, but.
Sometimes it's important to find out where the next Millville student is waitlisted on. Cause I know some people who have started, you know, a day or two before, they've been told that they are going, so.
Yeah. Be nice if we had a deadline that's closer to budget season, but.
Yes.
Okay.
And so on the revenue side, again, I I was conservative. I was maybe too conservative. So I tried to. Be as realistic as I could based on what I what we know today. So I haven't changed the cherry sheet. We're still working off of what the governor's budget of February shows. They haven't changed those numbers. We haven't really altered. Excise taxes. We haven't altered. Permits and fees and so forth. Been tried to be conservative there, but anyway, so the revenues are as we see them. Today, based on what we know. Is there risk? Yes.
Yeah.
Is there opportunity? Yes.
Okay.
So it's an eighty two thousand dollar nut that needs to be dealt with in some manner. Whether it's free cash or otherwise, that's. Nothing to work through.
Okay. Any other questions to budget? Again, I think we're gonna have, definitely know we're gonna have a workshop or a meeting next week. I'd like to go through the latest and greatest budget that I get. I had. And then we can discuss in further detail.
Sounds like a plan.
Alright. Any other questions, comments? On budget? Tim, do you have anybody in public forum that has questions or comments?
No. This is Adrian. Can I just make one quick comment? So I, you know, as we're kind of, I completely appreciate what everyone's trying to do with this town meeting, but we keep referring to having a town meeting in the fall. And I just want to put my perspective out there is I actually am more concerned about what's gonna happen in the fall than what's gonna happen three weeks from now. Given, you know, the dashboard that the state is releasing daily showing that we have decreases. So, you know, as the board considers kind of another special town meeting to address all of these other articles, I. You know, I would hope that it's earlier rather than later, even if that's August. Just when things look safe, because I would hate to have to delay another special town meeting and all these articles. Because something starts to surge again in September. That's just my thought.
Yeah. Yeah, and I agree with that. And that's why I was very happy that the recommendation came through as June twenty second. Because I think once we're in the fall and we have all these little children in the school bringing all their lovely little germs back. It it may be a different, you know, scene then that we we can't expect, but at the same time, we need to get the budget done. Keep the town running and hopefully we can have special town meeting, fall town meeting. In a successful way that we can get through the rest of these items, so.
Yeah, as moderator too, that was something that we talked about on that task force, you know, that we as soon as, you know, border health. Seems that the local epidemiology is trending down. As soon as, you know, we think that it looks safe, you know, definitely to have that meeting, have those further discussions. On the remainder of those articles before we do get into, you know, to a November situation, which is when our special normally is. You know, try to try to get as as soon as the state releases a budget and we have a little bit more information. Really getting in there and tidying up as much as we can. In in as safe of a timeframe as we can. So that was certain, that was, I completely agree with that and that was the recommendation from that committee as well.
Good. Alright, anybody in public forum, Tim, before we move on? Selectment report. Andrew, Jen, anybody?
I, the only thing I had was about the cares money in the in the school and so, and that was addressed earlier, so I'm good.
Okay, Andrew?
No, I'm good.
Peter, town administrators report, you have anything? You're on mute.
Some days you want to, I have nothing beyond what we've already covered. You know, we'll move forward. So by the time you have your have the workshop. We'll have a better idea what to do about town hall opening as I started to talk about. So that's something to consider. Big thing this week is really getting the first tranche, if you will, of the CARES Act funding request in. And hopefully not leaving money on the table, but we really. Don't because we have another bite at the bigger bite at the apple later in the year. But to the extent there's, you know, I'm not one to be trying to pad things, you know, and if, but if. A- a- any of you have guidance in that regard, I certainly welcome it, but. You know, there are a couple of items where, geez, we could use a computer for remote work like we did. We bought one for. Marcia, that sort of thing. Arguably, we might put forth and I'll. Talk to the chair a little bit further. We might put forth something for one of those. Electric stretcher thingies to add to the ambulance, because just in fact, the other day. They tried to put somebody in in the stretcher and the stretcher wouldn't fold up. And so they had to get. Experts to come and help take the person to where they needed to go. And that ball, you could make the argument that that falls within trying to serve COVID nineteen needs better. That's something I'm looking real hard at, including the chief had asked for. We're not seeking for. Other things at this stage, trying to be creative, trying to be prudent, trying to, it has to be substantiated and. Frankly, auditable by the feds directly to the town. So we don't want to put for something that isn't. Isn't legit, if you will.
Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement with that because if we do and then it comes back and we have to pay for it out of funds, we may not, may or may not have. Is there a hotline per se that you can call and check and ask about these certain items? I know it's new, it's a new type of funding, so.
Yeah.
Questions?
We're, I don't know. I think the deadline is pretty quick here. It's gotta be in this week.
Yeah.
And and so far, I've the things I've sat in on and the questions that have been asked, the answers from the top. Financial people at the state. Have often been, we're working on that. We're figuring that out. We can't tell you, so. I think just, I understand the spirit and the and the objective of it. I don't know how they got to the number exactly, but. It seems like a fairly substantial sum. Available to the town of Millville, but it's not. You know, who knows? Who knows?
Right.
So like I say, and is you concur, let's only put forth what is legitimate and substantial.
Right.
On that. Other things, you know, where the auditors are have resurfaced. They've been in, you know, they are non. You know, essential business, so they've been basically shut down. They've now resurfaced. We're providing them, you know, additional information. So that ball is moving forward.
Oh, good.
I did look at extending the park grant, but basically all the. Spending is gonna take place between now and the end of June. It really is just submitting for it by August. So we're a little back and forth of the need for extension. I may ask for an extension on the internal audit because the way it's looking right now, we're. Tracking it maybe less than twenty thousand dollars of the thirty thousand available, so. I might look for a deeper dive. By the firm I brought in to do some deep diving. Expand their scope a little bit.
Okay, good.
Ball's rolling. But again, I'm very happy and and pleased with the way the. The 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 folks have been working hard in spite of the restrictions of access to town hall and so forth. They've done a good job working remotely. They've done a good job of working around, making sure that folks aren't crossing paths in town hall and so forth. So I, you know, I think the the folks of of Millville should be pretty proud of the the folks that are serving them in the public sector here. And I likewise would say that about the folks at the BMR District and. And I've sat in on calls with BVT folks. They're all, you know, everybody's really. Tried to work around the the situation and you all deal with that in your own lives, as you know. But, you know, we're pulling through here and without skipping too many beats.
There you go. Alright, and any items in the last forty eight hours that we need to talk about that we don't have on our agenda?
No, I don't, I don't really have anything at this stage.
Okay, at this point in time, we're pushing the meeting minutes off until the next meeting. And then Peter, I'll come and sign some items that I need to sign down.
Yeah, so I think you you could sign the parade application. I've sent it to you if you want to just. Print it out, if you can print it out, sign it and leave it off. That would be good, just so it's in for the file. Everybody's signed everything.
We have it here signed.
Yeah, is for you all to sign the warrant to come in. So I will. finalize the drafting of the official warrant that you all need to sign that then gets posted. I'm a day later. So if we can do that, this, you know, if you all can come in, we'll put it upside the, you know, in the. Vestibule there.
So Peter, I have that question. Do all our fops still work?
Mind us. Mine does.
Okay. I know just some workplaces turned fobs off, so people weren't coming and going and compromising, so I haven't been in, um, so that's why I ask, okay.
You know, so, there's a, there's a big sign on the door.
There is, there is, I just told on myself.
The town administrator says, whoa, I didn't, Sherry must have put that up.
Yeah, I ignored it, sorry, I had to drop off some goodies. So just re- remember, when you go in to sign the warrant, um, there should be seven copies.
That's correct.
Just make sure everybody signs every copy.
Yeah, so I'll let everybody know when it's available and what specifics are, okay?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And you, you'll see a version of it before or simultaneous with that.
Peter, can I get a copy of that final version as well?
Of course, Jackie, of course.
Thank you, well, I just feel like there's a whole bunch of versions and I, I don't always.
No, we'll give you the final one, that's right, that's very good.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anything else?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Um, the audits, were, are we still on schedule with those or what have, what's going on with those at the moment? Do we know anything new?
Well, so just what I said, we, we don't have a particular schedule or, you know, they've been on hiatus. Now, working on it, when they'll issue a report from the outside auditors, uh, I, I don't know that yet, um, they still got work they have to do. When we get a draft of their, of the report, you'll get that simultaneously on the internal audit, you know, we talked about, uh, some of that in the executive session matter and that matter remains, uh, unknown at this point, um, but some of that work is related to that discussion. So that's why I want to do a deeper dive.
Do we know how far we have to go or how much we have gone? No?
Yeah, we, I mean, I know how far we've gone, I, you know, there's just areas that require further scrutiny.
Okay.
I don't know that they will factor into the matter we talked about, um, or factor into a subsequent matter. How's that?
Okay.
Thank you for updating us again, Peter, on that.
Yep.
All right, so our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, June fifteenth, but I'd like to get something on the books, um, for us to meet within the next week or so. Oops, let me just open my calendar here.
May look at my social calendar, it looks, it looks pretty clear after three-thirty every day.
Let's see. And then we have to post, what's the posting date, Peter, eighth?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what is the, let me see, the ninth, is the ninth good for everybody?
Mm-hmm, Tuesday, the ninth.
Tuesday the ninth? Tim, are you good for Tuesday the ninth at seven PM?
I'm good.
Yep.
But, Tim, look, I remembered to ask Tim.
Oh, oh, Tim.
He's the most important one to ask.
Right, we can't do this without him.
No.
All right, so the ninth, which is a Tuesday, seven PM? All right. We'll get that posted as either a meeting or workshop, whatever we need to do for that. All right, I think that's it for me. Thank you to all our guests tonight.
Yep, so I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Eight fifty-eight.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.